At seven o'clock, we're going to call the meeting to order. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, free, legal, just, and fair.
First item, I need to tell you that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by McCann, and is also being broadcast by Verizon. With that, we'll move down to unanticipated. The Chair has one item under unanticipated. We had before us a request, application for a one-day license from Bill Fuller's bartending service in New England. It is for April 6, 2013. It's a comedy show from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. This must be at the Alley Theater. It's a beer and wine.
Motion approved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it, it's unanimous. Next item, last week's meeting minutes won't be voted on until our next meeting on the 8th. I would entertain a motion to authorize the Chair or his designee to sign warrants for the weekending.
Mr. Chairman?
March 29.
You anxious to get out of here tonight? Because we have some other.
Oh, we have some announcements.
Announcements and a hand.
Yeah, I guess. But that's okay. We will, we'll hit every item on the agenda, even if you have to remind me. Go ahead, Mr. McKinnon.
Well, I was at the SERPED meeting last week, and it is time to reappoint a new delegate for the, for SERPED. Do you want to put this on the, for next week? On the agenda for next week, or do you want to do it now?
Don't you think the new board should do that?
Well, we have to do it now because of the timing of their meeting.
And I say we nominate the new guy.
Whoever he may be.
Whoever that may be.
Steve, isn't there a date on that? I thought the date was in May, wasn't it? Because I had given that to Jackie to say, why don't we do that once we have a new board? And I thought there was time, but if not.
Well, then let's, then let's put it on for next week's agenda, and we can check the time, make sure there's no time constraints.
Okay.
Sorry.
Anything else? Mr. Tim, any announcements or recognitions?
Well, I guess one announcement is we had another tragedy this weekend with two more families will be affected. And I wish there was some way to, to help with that situation, but I guess it's just a matter of personal responsibility. We have to be careful.
Yep, yes, it is.
It's a terrible thing. It's a terrible tragedy for both families.
It's awful.
And there's just too much of it going on. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. I have one announcement. The staff of the wastewater treatment plant will be offering a tour of the plant on Saturday, April 6th. That's this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. Elected and appointed officials and members of the general public are invited to see the current process in operation. Sounds fun, doesn't it? You all going?
I'm going.
And to learn about the proposed upgrades to meet new federal water quality standards. So you're all invited.
Better April than August.
You're all invited to it. I've been told by Charlie, it's a very informative tour, and you don't need to be afraid. It'll be okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think we ought to invite, purposely invite the Edgeway delegation to see what a well-run sewage treatment plant really is.
There you go. You got your personal invitation. You got your personal invitation. Any other board member have any announcements or recognitions?
Just have one question, Mr. Chairman.
What's the problem?
Have we asked the public if they have anything that they're unanticipated?
Not yet. I will, until we get through the board. Anyone, no other board member has anything. Anyone in the audience have anything under unanticipated? All right. Moving on down, I already mentioned that we have no minutes tonight. We've already done the motion on the warrant approval. We're down to new business, and the first item on new business is vote on designed services for the wastewater treatment plant. My understanding is that we need to approve one of the four companies that applied for the, that answered our request, the proposal.
Correct. We, the process is to rank the finalists in order of preference, which I've given you in a separate memo. Chairman Rulo, myself, Todd Goldman from the Wastewater Treatment Plant, Andy Baggis, Caroline McCroy, and Paul Miller, Paul Gabriel of Environmental Partners, all interviewed all four submitters, and they're all very good companies. However, Wright Pierce stood out among them, and they're our first recommendation. CDM was a close second, and GHD was third. So the process would be to have the board approve this ranking, and then it would allow us to start negotiations with Wright Pierce, and if we're not able to successfully conclude those negotiations, we could then go on to CDM and then GHD if we have to, in order to hire our designer.
Any board member have any questions?
Mr. Tim.
Mr. Spataro.
Just for purposes of the public, that would not have been as informed. What made the number-one candidate stick out a little bit more than the other?
Well, we just thought that there's, they, they did very well in the interview, and they came forward with some suggestions that we hadn't considered before in terms of saving money and approaching the whole redesign. So that, you know, carried the day, really.
I can give the reason why I ranked them number one. One, they're a regional firm, so it's not an international firm, and this size of an operation, anywhere from $20 million to $40 million, plant retrofit seems to be in their wheelhouse. They do a lot of this stuff. And like Charlie said, they did a great job during the, their presentation, and they were much more aggressive in offering alternatives to the processing process that would potentially save us some money. They also are willing to help with financing, and, and they would consider ongoing maintenance as part of their, part of their proposal, so that we get a full view of capital cost, maintenance, and financing. So I, based on that, I ranked them number one. As Mr. Cristal indicated, CDM was a very close second. They've done a lot of work on that plant for us in the past, and clearly both firms perfectly capable of handling it. I just thought that Pierce, Wright Pierce was much more in tune with the size of our project than CDM was. So I ranked them number one.
And what Al meant in terms of financing is they've recently done the very application that we need to do to get the 0% financing from DEP. They did it for the town of Leominster, the city of Leominster. So, you know, their recent experience in just what we need to do next, you know, was also a factor.
And when you say save some money, just again, for purposes of the public, does it sound like it was big money potential savings?
They didn't, they didn't put a number on these things, but that would be part of it, but they came up with some very definite possibilities for doing that. So, but there's no number.
Yeah, there was no number. It was just a, you know, maybe a way of phasing the whole upgrade that could, you know, save us money, initially anyway.
Just when we're voting on something, it's always nice for the people to know.
I mean, the one thing they talked about was to kill off the bacteria, a lot of the modern plants use UV lighting, which is very expensive to install. Low-cost maintenance going forward, but very highly costly capital investment upfront, as opposed to adding basically chlorine to kill off that bacteria, which is very low in capital, but a higher maintenance cost going forward. So, I mean, they were the only ones that kind of mentioned that possibility, that we may have a choice there, whereas the other firms just were, just mentioned UV lighting as, as just a foregone conclusion that that was going to be the process. So, I, I just thought that was an indication that they were thinking about other ways of doing it, and very careful about implementing new technology to make sure that it was proven technology, and we weren't going to be the first ones in the swimming pool trying out this new technology. So, again, that was one of the reasons. Swimming pool, probably bad, bad choice. That's okay. You jumping in now? Nah, I'm not jumping in.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, to the town manager, was Wright Pierce successful in getting the zero?
They're still waiting on that. You know, it's that, it's that recent that they're still waiting on. But, but, you know, my, you know, meeting with the DEP prior to, you know, those meetings suggests to me that it is very available, that that is very doable as long as we go through the exercise of doing a comprehensive wastewater management plan.
Did CDM have the experience of doing the comprehensive wastewater management plan?
Not recently.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the ranking and the other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it, it's unanimous. Thank you. Next item is vote to approve a second-hand license for Boutique Azalea, 465 Center Street. My, Jackie, help me out here. My understanding is they're currently in business, in operations, they're just moving one storefront over or something?
That's correct, but they'll need a new license, because the license goes.
For a specific address.
Right. So, we just need to just give them a new license.
Is the applicant here this evening? This seems pretty routine to me. Any questions, the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it, it's unanimous. The next item is vote to accept donations of five picnic tables from Carol Repone from the Oliver Mill Park.
Ms. Repone called me up last week and expressed an interest in donating picnic tables to replace the ones that are there. I guess they're, they're a little worn out, and I put her in touch with Fran Cash, and, you know, she understands what they, what particular design they need and is willing to do that. So I told her I would ask you to accept this gift.
Any questions? Pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Like to say a big thank you to Mr. Repone, and remind everybody that the herring are running.
Ah, the fish, the fish are back. Thank you, Al. So have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it. I think we also would have, I'd entertain a motion to send a letter of.
Film.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it. The next item is that we need to, listed on the agenda, revisit vote, raise a 2013 Tissapquin family campground application. Apparently there were some technical issues with our vote, and, and we need to amend that motion. I am, I'm just going to read this motion, and then I'll, I'll entertain someone to make the motion. To deny a campground license for 2013 for 110 camping sites. She had mentioned, 113 has always been the traditional number that she, Mrs. Hove would come and apply for, and our motion said 113, but this, she only applied for 110 units for Tissapquin family campground, because the campground has insufficient septic waste disposal design capacity to serve the number of camping units which will be used during the camping season. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Yes, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Holton, and you're amending the.
Our vote.
Your vote. Well, you amended the whole vote. That wasn't said last week about, that the system has, the reason you denied the license last week was because I had a failed septic system.
That's correct.
So now you're also amending that?
Yes. Yes, we are. It was inaccurate, it wasn't correct.
Oh, so you're doing damage control, is what you're doing?
No, we're not. We're trying to make the vote correct and accurate, as opposed to a vote that was not accurate.
Well, I, I feel that the vote was correct and accurate.
Or it wasn't. It was not.
Well.
That's the answer. It was not correct.
Well.
So we're amending our vote. It's perfectly within the rights of this board to do that and fix errors, and that's what we're doing. We're fixing it. We're making it correct.
Well, that wasn't discussed at the meeting last week, that there wasn't, there was insufficient septic for the number of sites that I was at.
That was mentioned.
It was not discussed.
It was not in the vote, but it was discussed several times during that meeting, that the reason the license is being denied was because of septic system issues. And in the past, this has always been the reason that we denied your license, was inadequate capacity of your septic system.
That was not discussed last week. The vote came to.
It was discussed, but the motion did not indicate the correct reason for denial, and now we're fixing that problem tonight.
Well, it was also discussed that there was things that were done to the septic system to bring it up to what I needed for that, and of course, then the vote went to that it was denied because it was a failure. And then someone in the audience came up and said that you were being capricious and what.
Anybody, I allow anybody to speak at this meeting.
Right.
On a particular issue, and that was that individual's particular opinion, and wasn't adopted by the board, however. And again, I don't know how many times I can say this.
Well.
The motion that was made and approved last week was incorrect. It was incorrect because of the number of units, and it was incorrect because of the reason for the denial, and we're trying to fix that.
Well.
And we're doing that tonight.
I just want.
So I don't know how many times I can say that, but that's what we're doing.
Well, I want to state that I believe that it was arbitrary and capricious.
That's fine.
And I also want to state that, that what this board is doing is damage control for a lawsuit that I do have against the town and the board, and the things that you are doing to this campground, in my opinion, are intentional and arbitrary discrimination, whether occasioned by express terms of the statute or by improper execution through duly constituted agents. And there is, that is what this amounts to here. There is not septic issues. You could go to a higher authority to find out if there were septic issues, but evidently your health agent is the, she should be sitting in your spot, because it seems to me that she's running this town, because she has the vote on this board, and she also has the vote on other boards. So I did.
Well, fortunately, she didn't run for selectmen. I did run, and this board saw fit to elect me as chairman, so here I am.
Right. Well, I'm not saying that.
And thank you.
There was nothing about, I said she should be sitting there, because it's only her opinion that counts with this board.
It also apparently, I don't want to drag this on, but.
Right.
It apparently counted with the court, too, because the court sided with this.
No, no, the court said, you didn't read the court order for this, for the.
I did this afternoon. Thank you.
The health order was for, not because of the septic thing, they, I quoted last week what the court ordered on the health issues. They didn't say that I couldn't get up to code and have that amount in the court order, and I have been working towards that, and I did do things over the last year to bring this up to where it should be. But of course, this board and others don't want to hear anything that I'm working at going forward with. They just want to shut it down right there.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sure that you, your amendment will carry.
Thank you for your comments. We have a motion and a second regarding this amended motion on our.
Who made the motion and the second? I read it, but who?
I read it.
He made it.
Steve made a motion, and I figured.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McKinnon?
I think we have to go back to the, to the warrant item.
Yes.
Because I don't think we did vote on that.
We did vote.
I think I cut you off on it. I think you started to go into it.
Oh, you cut me off.
But I stopped you because we.
You stopped me.
You were getting a little ahead of yourself.
I shouldn't have let you do that.
No.
Okay.
So can we go back and?
Yes, we can go back and revisit that agenda, right?
Make a motion to authorize the chairman or his designate to sign the warrants for the weekending, 3/29/13.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it, it's unanimous. Not quite 7:30 yet. Why don't we do the town manager's report?
Mr. Chairman, the one item I have this week relates to a question that came up last week about the town's subsidized housing inventory, and you have from Joe Rutherowitz, our Housing Authority Director, a accurate tally. We're a little under 10, under 5% right now. With the addition of Star Mill, we'll be at 5.7%, and if we get to 28 units at Shushop Place, we'll be at 6.1%. So I think Mr. Rutherowitz last week said that we were about halfway there, and she was, she's right, we were about halfway there.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. We still have time. Let's do correspondence. Let's start with Mr. Spataro this week.
I'm all set.
Mr. Frawley?
I don't know, it's just that one letter from Ms. Frazier about the solar plant going on there in Akava. Just as kind of a tangent off of that, I do think we should, we should try to get in front of some, some solar field zoning or planning or something. I know that Ruth's aware of it, and she's working on it, but if, if something like that comes into Middleborough, we just don't have an opportunity to really say much about it. So it could, could pose a problem in our town, as it is, and some other towns that haven't addressed it quite yet.
I don't think we've addressed any of the renewable energy farms, including wind, have we?
We haven't.
Wind, I don't think we have enough wind.
Yeah, I think we're.
We don't have much sustaining wind.
We do on Monday.
We've got plenty of wind here. Thanks, thanks a lot.
Taxes to go up. What was that again? Mr. Frawley?
That's just what we need to get Mr. McKinnon going.
There you go. But you're right, I think, I think we ought to.
We should at least start getting ready for it, because we got plenty of sun.
I'd make a motion that we put it on the agenda for May. I'll second that. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Frawley?
That's it for me.
You want to put another pitch in for the herring?
Herring run.
Thank you. Mr. McKinnon?
Nope, just that the herring are running. I was down there, I said it was down there Sunday, actually it was Saturday afternoon I was down there, and there's quite a few of them frolicking in the ladder, and there seemed to be quite a flow of water going down there, and I, you know, the water was, I'm just kind of stretching this out. I can't do this for five minutes, though. Can't talk about fish for five minutes.
I can.
Well, yeah. The ladder seemed to be very full, and there were a lot of fish in there, so.
That brings up an interesting question. How about the height of the dam? Are we back to where we're supposed to be?
I've talked about that on, on May, too.
No, no, but I mean, we, we haven't had anything more from Lakeville about water.
Yeah, we've heard quite a bit from Lakeville about it, but we've come to a, Mr. Fennessy came down on, I think it was two Sundays ago, and took a look at it and came to the same conclusion that we've been saying all along. Our dam and our fish ladder have little to nothing to do with the, the height of Long Pond.
So it's, if we have a good flow, it's, height of the dam's back where it's supposed to be?
Height of the dam's at a, at a good spot right now.
Okay.
And wasn't that, that day, didn't the Fisheries Commission also remove a couple of boards with the?
From the fish ladder.
From the fish ladder, in the presence of the officials from other towns, and they were happy to see that?
Yep. Representative Schmidt from, who represents Preetown and Westport and Fall River was there, and a couple residents from Preetown were there as well. And just as a quick, another quick little tangent, on Wednesday and Thursday at 10:00 a.m. this week, a fish, the Rhode Island Fisheries and Wildlife will actually be coming to Middleborough to borrow a whole bunch of spawning herring, take them down to Rhode Island, let them go down there, the spawning herring, lay their eggs in rivers and, well, in watersheds down in Rhode Island, swim back to the ocean, and then next year, those fish come back to Middleborough, but the eggs that they leave will return back to Rhode Island. So it's, it's kind of neat figuring that, all that stuff and all that stuff works, and, you know. I don't know too many people who could spend six years at sea and then find their way back to Middleborough up this on river.
Nobody in this room.
I couldn't.
Yeah.
Nobody in this room, that's right. Anything else, Mr. McKinnon?
No, no, I'm, I'm done.
You're fine?
I'm done.
Mr. Quell?
Well, as always, when we have a job posting, I like to announce it. Plenty of people out there without work. So there is a job posting, and please find it for a DPW truck driver.
Except it's passed.
It's already passed? Oh, geez, there we go.
It's already filled, right?
It's already filled, well, good. Was there somebody from Middleborough?
Yes.
Great, that's good. Mr. Frawley already covered the letter from the folks out there with the solar panel You know, we got this letter here from the Executive Director of the MBTA Advisory Board. I don't think things could look, look any more bleak for the MBTA if you read this thing. They're proposing significant fare increases, significant service cuts, the sale of assets, repurposing funds away from capital projects to operational uses, and restructuring debt services to close an operational deficit. Can it get any worse? I'm sorry.
That's the same action they took last year.
Yeah.
The same actions they took last year.
Oh.
So this would be a one-year solution?
Well, that's a real mess.
It is a real mess.
And, you know, what you saw from the governor's proposal and the Mass DOT was that they're, you know, they're concerned right now with getting people from Pittsfield to New York City. I'd just like to see them take care of things from Braintree to Boston, and, you know, when you look at this, it's just, I think it's some of our concerns we've already raised with some of the things that are going on, and you just don't understand how it can get this bad, but it's certainly siphoning any kind of chance of funding away from doing a fix to our rotary anytime soon, or expanding 44 or anything, so that's a real mess. Other than that, nothing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Spataro?
It could get worse for the MBTA. They could get some unfunded state mandates like the rest of us.
I stand corrected.
Chair's all set. With that, it is now 7:30, and we are, we're going to continue the hearing on Edgway Mobile Home Park. This is continued from March 25th, 2013. Just to refresh everyone, it's been a while since we met. This was, this hearing was to, to vote on an application for a license for Edgway Mobile Home Park for 2013. This board continued the decision on that, waiting on a possible negotiation for the sale of both parks, and the town manager was supposed to be in touch with potential, And the town manager was supposed to be in touch with potential, and I understand he's had conversations. But with that, I will ask for an update from Attorney Burke.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. And I'm happy to provide an update. I thought we had it sold Thursday. And we were supposed, we agreed in principle on the terms. And we were supposed to execute an agreement on Friday with a potential buyer who I think would have been an excellent choice for the town in doing the work. There were some concerns that were raised, and the net result is that there is no agreement. So I know his attorney is coming back in town in the next day or two. Anticipating, we may have some discussions, but we just need to get out and proceed with a broker. I don't know if the broker's here. He's going to come tonight to provide an overview to you if you're interested. As to the difficulties in listing and selling the fridge war, oh, excuse me, the Middleborough parcel, the Lakeville property is actually not a problem in terms of the number of buyers that are out there. But because of the issues that are still outstanding with the Middleborough park, it's been a great difficulty in doing what I'm trying to do, which is to have one buyer or one consortium purchase both parks rather than run the risk of selling the Twin Coach facility, which is an easy sale, and then running into issues of trying to sell the Middleborough possibly. So that is essentially it. I do not have a firm agreement. I talked with someone today. And I am hopeful that within the next two weeks, we will have an agreement. But as before, I can't guarantee it. There just are many issues outstanding. There were great concerns of potential buyers. And we have, we've had some excellent candidates that looked at this property, that wanted to buy, and for one reason or another chose not to go forward.
But this potential buyer actually made an offer.
Uh, yeah, he made an offer and I accepted.
And you accepted?
I accepted.
So price wasn't an issue by, on Thursday?
Price was not an issue. I said, yes, let's go. And I prepared a purchase and sale agreement for execution for Friday, and it didn't get signed.
So what, what happened?
You know, I can't speak for the buyer.
Is the buyer in the room? Would you like to come down and talk? The seller has spoken. Because this is a key issue for the board. This is why the board continued this hearing, was because it felt that the only way to solve this would be with a potential buyer who could fix those problems and move forward. And now we find out that apparently a fair offer was made and accepted, and then it fell apart. And I don't want to get in the middle of trying to negotiate a deal here. That's not, I'm just trying to understand why we can't move forward, so...
Well, what happened this time, Bob Calucci from Lakeville, Social Real Estate Development, have done a lot of work in this town and in Lakeville. That's true. We got to the point of all that happening. I had made offers. They negotiated it back a little bit, and I was ready to go forward. I didn't change the Middleborough offer, but I did change the Lakeville one a little bit because I drove through there on Wednesday or Thursday, and Columbia Gas was tearing up the roads. So I stopped and I had some conversations with a couple of the guys there. And then after some of the Lakeville residents. It says this has been an ongoing problem in there. There's gas issues. I guess it's been in the Gazette a couple of times, which I didn't know about. And they said it was an ongoing thing, and more of the roads were going to be getting cut up. And, you know, there were leaks and a lot of different issues. Well, I made the offer not knowing that. I was never disclosed any of that. According to what the attorney told Bob Mather, my attorney, this week, is that they had no knowledge any of this was going on over there. So I, you know, whether that's true or not, if you made an offer on a house and you went to do your home inspection and people cutting holes in your driveway, would you go with the same offer? Or would you say, and, and there's going to be ongoing holes getting dug up in your yard for the next so many months or however, would you make the same offer? No. So I made an offer. Actually, I wanted to make a much lower offer, and Bob talked me into coming up and being a little more reasonable. But if, since I'm up here, you have more issues than even just the price. Because the offers that get made with very little money down, so you can be able to have the opportunity to do your due diligence, but at least it's an offer to get the two parks respectively, you know, to decide if they want to buy it or not and move forward and all that kind of stuff happens. You know, there's, the Lakeville park really has no problems. You're going to have a real problem if both parks get sold to the same person, or it doesn't get done properly, because then you need a treatment plan. This is not. So, but I, he understands that, the sellers, and, and I think they're going to try to set that up in order. But after your last meeting here, when I went out to talk to their attorney, I made myself, I said, I am a real buyer. I'm the one they're talking about at the meeting. I wasn't prepared last week to speak up. You know, some of the Middleborough people came over in Lakeville. Well, I'd had a couple of conversations with some Lakeville people that came in to ask them questions when I was in the board of health. I'm actually on the board of health in Lakeville. So I was in the office, and the girls came over and they were asking questions. And I went over and I disclosed that I'm, I know all this about it. I gave them all the information. I sent them over to prime engineer and I said, I know about this because I'm looking at it also. And I have a comfort that the Lakeville people are willing to, to, you know, one way or another, want to work this and move forward. There's a couple of people that represented Middleborough last week, you know, didn't want to talk to me. They told me, you know, that they didn't want me to buy it. He suggested we had a meeting during the week before this meeting. They said they didn't want to meet with me. And to be honest, if they want to buy the park, I don't know why that's just not being worked on right now. Because, you know, somebody buying this, even taking out a three point one million dollar loan, has to put in about six hundred thousand dollars of their own money. I'm not woke, you know? I got to refinance my house. I got to put a note in my office. I got to do some stuff, everything I've worked for to do this. I don't want to fight with people that don't want me there. I'm not, you know what I mean? That's not my intent. You know, I was hoping to at least have a conversation to see if people were open to me coming in. I mean, I did Holly Ridge, Hare and Middleborough, thirty units, fifty-five and older. I did Woods Edge in Lakeville, a mile from the place, thirty-six units, fifty-five and older, but my father still is there. I don't run around. Everybody in town knows me. I've been in Lakeville for twenty-five years. But then, as I've been thinking about it, you know, Bob Mather said to me today, what would be your favorite outcome? If you could get any outcome you want, what would it be? And it would be, I'd buy Lakeville, let the Middleborough residents buy their own park, which DEP was in favor of, and, and work with them and do site work and maybe project forming over there. But, and, and I think, too, Gene Spalden, awesome. Sat down with me, spent a lot of time over the last month going over things. Bob Whalen, a lot of time going over things with me. Planning board, it took about a week or so to get a two-hundred-and-fifty item multiple list of every little thing that they want fixed over there. According to Bob, their issue with developers is if a plan was approved that way, that's what the people should get right down to a blade of grass. That's fine if this is how they feel. So me coming in as another developer, if I'm up, if I'm to that level, that sidewalks are going to get moved, if all these things have to get done, transformers moved, radiuses on the roads redone, I mean, this isn't a list of little things. This is, you know, a lot of money. You know, the residents probably have a better opportunity to sit down with you guys in the planning board and say, okay, well, we don't want to spend a hundred grand moving sidewalks, so they're okay with us. And, and maybe have some flexibility with the planning board and you guys as to some of the compromises that they're willing to make if they are, because it's their park where any other developer is going to get into this thing and, and wonder why they got into it. Because it's, it's endless. I mean, the water has to go in before the septic system does. I've talked to Billy Logan, probably a lot of you guys know. I've talked to a couple of the local guys that have done work in there. But Billy used to do a lot of work. I talked to Bob Whalen, witnessed some of the new ones going in. Most of the water lines and stuff in the park aren't, you know, it's like well line and stuff, which is fine because there were wells there. But it's not going to handle the taunting pressure. So you guys at the last meeting were talking about the septic system that needs to get in. You know, the only way I would buy this is to do it right, is to run a new water line from Lakeville all the way through, all the way to the back. I mean, I had a leak at my office. I get taunting water. My bill went from forty dollars to three hundred and something in one month and one leak. Who's going to chase all those leaks around the park for the next twenty years and tear up stuff and do that? Makes no sense. The Middleborough half knew it. Maybe they're willing to gamble and hook up the pressure to it and see what happens. It's a master meter, though. The owners are going to be responsible for any leaks and when all the problems are going. I'm not willing to do that. So, you know, if they bought it and they wanted to try that and pressure test it and see if it'll work, you know, we can run the new water right to them, tie them into their, into the Middleborough part. I mean, there's a lot of different things in it. And what I haven't understood is why no one's talking. I mean, so much anger. And like, why aren't these things being sat down? I mean, I know I'm only into it the last month. I know there's years of history here, but, you know, to move forward, you know what I mean? At some point, you know, I didn't think everybody was going to come and say, oh, thank you, Bob, for fixing and wanting to come and help us. But I at least expected people to talk to me. And, so that's the real thing. But the only reason I changed my offer was because of that gas, which I witnessed. Talked to some of the Lakeville residents after. It's been an ongoing problem since found out it was in the paper. So it wasn't arbitrary the eleventh hour I threw a wrench into it. I feel that's a legitimate issue and expense I'm going to have to incur going forward and when the roads get done. And I didn't change the Middleborough offer at all. So just to clear that up, I didn't make a fake, half-assed offer, excuse my language, and not willing to follow through on. But that wasn't disclosed to me. If the owners don't own a lawyer, then they should get a new management company because it's been going on for a long time over there. And if they're really not being made aware of it, then they should fire that management company today. Because, you know, that makes no sense. It wasn't an emergency repair that there's a leak and they came and fixed it. They were trying to locate lines. There's lines in there they don't know where they are. There's a lot of stuff going on. There's more roads going to be cut up, you know? So I didn't, not keep my word at the eleventh hour and back out of the deal. I just adjusted the Lakeville offer to reflect more work that I was going to have to do. So, and I don't want to make an offer arbitrarily just to make you guys happy, to quiet everybody down, to do due diligence all summer, when I know at the end of it, I'm going to have to change it, and then it's going to have to start all over again. So I've been trying to make a real, honest offer upfront that I could follow through all the way to the end with and finish the project. My bank has been involved multiple times with water savings. They've worked out a plan so I can put the financing together for what I offered. I mean, I've done everything that, right, to follow through on. So it kind of made it sound like I backed out at the eleventh hour and stuff, and that's not what happened at all. And I just want you guys to be aware of that. That was a legitimate thing. I guess first, he said this morning, that that didn't happen, that no one's cutting up the roads. Later, went back and apologized to Mr. Mather. Basically, was calling me a liar, saying that me saying the gas was happening in there, the issues were there. Acknowledged it, but then we never heard anything back all day. We were expecting that at least here, a yes or no by the end of today before this meeting. We never did that. So that's where I, if you have any questions, but that's what happened with me.
Okay. I understand, and I'll recognize you, Adam, in a minute. I understand you have your real estate broker. Did you say you have anything else to add to what has been said here this evening? Why don't you come on up? And then I'll open up the floor to...
Good evening.
Good evening. Please introduce yourself.
My name's Paul Hartel. I'm the president of Hartel Commercial Realty, located out of Balmouth in Hunsey, Massachusetts. And here tonight to chat with you about some of the background of the marketing of this project. First of all, I, I compare with Bob. Bob is one of the prospective buyers that we've had for this project, and he's worked exceedingly hard. It's a complicated project. It's kind of like peeling the onion. And I, I think Bob has gone out of his way to try to understand the nuances of this particular deal. I've worked on this project for over four months and have brought a number of very well-qualified, experienced companies that are used to buying complicated projects, that have heavy equipment, that have experience in this type of work. And the first group we had before Christmas went all the way up to Sonning, where the, where the attorneys had prepared the final document. Last minute, the fellow called me up and said, Paul, we can't go ahead. Weren't fighting over the, weren't fighting over any of the issues in the deal. They said, we feel uncomfortable doing a deal in Middleborough. And they walked away based on that.
Doing a deal with Middleborough? For the Edgeway Park?
Yeah.
Or, or working with the town of Middleborough?
Above. And so I, you know, I've been doing this a long time. I've run into situations in my business where certain people won't deal with certain towns. But it, it was a, a, I saw the emails, the intercompany emails, because they felt bad. It went all the way down to the final moment. And it was the town of Middleborough and past dealings that they had that squayed them from marketing the deal.
Past dealings they had with who? Edgway?
No, the town of Middleborough in general. So...
You know, I take it you're not going to get specific here? You're just going to leave it that way?
I don't think, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to make an honest presentation of what happened, and I don't think the players, per se, are important. And what's, my strategy in this was not to, to broadcast this deal across the world because it's a complicated deal, and you can't have ten people in the town hall, ten people in, in the planning board asking questions. Because it's, it's, it's time-consuming for your staff. I had qualified people, so I felt there's no reason to broadcast it to the world. And I think Bob, Bob outlined a story to me today where he asked for some documents and it took him over seven days just to get some, some documents from. That being said, I have one qualified buyer who went all the way to the end, spent considerable monies with the attorneys, walked away at the last minute for stated reasons. I had two more exceedingly qualified people where essentially the exact same thing happened. They waived it, they waived the balance. They didn't fight over the price. They were petrified of dealing with the town of Middleborough. We subsequently started chatting with Bob, and Bob has been exceedingly diligent in covering some of the nuances of this project that frankly, we weren't aware of. And so I, I'm coming before you saying that we've tried to give faith to market this, this asset along with the Lakeville asset, to sell them together on the premise that it would be in both entities' best interest to have one strong entity with the financial capability to make the necessary expenditures. If, that was our, our goal. That's the goal of, I think, the heirs to this property. And it's, it's a, it makes economic sense to enjoy the economy at scale of having, managing a larger project. So I, I just wanted to have a candid conversation with you. Mr. Burke has indicated past meetings that he's had here. And I would say that we've tried very hard to put this, this deal together. And, you know, frankly, I don't think I've ever had an experience like this where people have walked away, capable people, for their unwillingness to deal with particularly the municipality. And I say that in an environment where this has been a recession, but it's been a recession without a lot of deals. There's actually a fair amount of money chasing projects and deals. And so when you find one, you, you can generally sell it if it's priced, priced reasonably. And I pass that along. I think that Bob is, is certainly an excellent candidate. We have some other people that are also quite interested. But as I said, I've been reluctant to open the floodgates and then try to do it more one at a time. So we very much share Attorney Burke's request for an extension for at least two weeks so we can approach this in an orderly fashion. approach this in an orderly fashion. I can't think of anything, anything positive that the town is not granting this extension.
I mean, this board, and I'm gonna open up to other board members to ask questions, but I'm gonna ask one more question. What is gonna be different in two more weeks? We've extended this thing now since the beginning of the year. I mean, it's been a long time. We've given you, and I know it's difficult to pull deals together, but what's gonna change in two weeks? So that the board should grant you, waive this for two more weeks, and then what's gonna happen in two weeks? What's gonna change?
I'll try to...
The town of Middleborough is not going, I mean, we have a specific list of things that need to be done on that park, and I think some are negotiable, but some are not.
I'll try to help. I don't know if we can have a deal together.
One kid, I'm sorry, Mrs. Burke, could you get closer to the mic?
Sure. I can't, I can't say for sure that a deal will get together in two weeks. But what I can say is that if the board, because it felt it was the appropriate thing to do, to deny the license, it would create a worse problem in terms of trying to build the property. The board in looking to give some time to put perspective, I'm sure you can guess, I'd love to sell the property. And, you know, from my perspective, I already said yes once. It won't be difficult for me to say yes again to this buyer or another buyer. But it becomes very problematic for a prospective buyer to look at a deal and first see that he has this administrative problem he has to deal with. I know in your own mind, you may be saying, if you are Mr. Qualified, come before us and we'll reconsider. That is, that is a, that is a non-starter for a lot of very successful business people. So what I, what I think would be in the best interest of everyone is if the board were to delay whatever action it is, to allow the opportunity for us to try to put something together. I'm not sure that it affects in any substantive way what you're doing in terms of the legal aspects of the permit. And it makes it eminently more, eminently easier for us to approach prospective buyers. So whether it's two weeks or a month, I guess it's the concept.
So you wanna, basically what you're saying is you want this board to continue, continue to allow you to have, not make a decision on this issue until you sell the park? That's what you're asking? That's what you're asking?
You're exactly right. And I...
I just wanna know what you're asking.
I candidly, well, what I asked you was, if I may, is what I presented in the submission to the board in terms of how I perceive what the statute says. But there's no sense in arguing about that. A middle ground is, we all want to achieve something. And that is to send me home and to get a buyer for this property. And it is not easily done if you were to deny the license, which would start another reaction, to create more issues. And that, it seems to be a practical solution for the board to maintain its authority, but we're old-acting in its authority, until we had an opportunity to reach or secure a buyer that was appropriate for the project.
Thank you. I'm gonna recognize Mr. Vaughn first, because he's been patient. But then I'm gonna turn it back over to the board, and then I'll reopen it to the audience. Go ahead, Mr. Vaughn.
I appreciate it. I represent Edgway, and I represent Quincoach. So I wanna respond first to some things that Mr. Pelucci brought up. As I was driving down to a wedding in Maryland this past week, I got a call from Bob Mather from Puerto Rico. So he's in Puerto Rico. I'm in Maryland. We don't know who the better lawyer is, when it comes down, or at least the one who's doing better. He discussed with me a number of things about the property, explained a number of things to me that I didn't previously know, particularly about the joint ownership issue with how, how things would be dealt with by the, by the Environmental Protection in terms of that. Sort of the interesting concept of the merger would require it, the separation would not in terms of doing that big project. He said a perfect day to him would be that Mr. Pelucci gets Lakeville and the Middleborough people get Middleborough. So that's, that's a perfect day. We were supposed to speak sometime either today or tomorrow. I didn't get the call. And that's, and that's fine. I mean, people have different schedules. I had some discussions with Mr. Pelucci. I think he's a gentleman, and I think he is someone that I would enjoy talking to about this topic. Putting that aside, I, I don't want to allow to pass here the problem that I'm seeing, or the potential problem that I'm seeing of us being dragged down Mr. Burke's money hole. The, as I understand the issue before the board, it's a question as to, do you reinstate a license or issue one, or do you not? Going down the rabbit hole of trying to figure out whether or not he can sell the property or not is beyond the jurisdiction of the question. The jurisdiction of the question is, does he fulfill the license requirements or not? I understand why the board has sort of gone to the expanded concentric circle. But that expanded concentric circle is not part of the authority of the question currently before the board. If you take a look at Chapter 140, 32B, it talks about issues and problems with sewage and the septic systems. And it says, unless such licensee, unless such licensee shall, within 30 days following the giving of such notice, correct the conditions at such premises to the satisfaction of both said department, the health department, and such board, the license so granted shall be suspended or revoked by such board. Then it says, any license so suspended may be reinstated by such board when the conditions at such premises, as to the sources of water supplied and works for the disposition of sewage are satisfactory to said department and such board. What I see there is, the issue you're looking at is, are the conditions on the premises as to the issues you spoke about last week, the failing system, as opposed to fail, I don't know the degrees here, are the conditions at a level where the license should be reinstated? Not, as I think Mr. Burke would phrase the issue, and I think we've also been kind of brought into, you know, within 30 days, are the conditions there with a buyer who can fix them of such a circumstance that somewhere in the future, this new buyer can pay the money and actually fix them, so we'll give him a license today on the hope? I sat at that same board you did, stringing these poor people along with hopes of future action, hopes of future action, hopes of future action. So I understand exactly where you are. You wanna get this wrapped up. I just don't see extending the issue. Why? People have brought up, can you sell, I believe at one point, Mr. Burke said, you can't sell a place that doesn't have a license. I think he's speaking of a colloquial term. It's real hard to sell a place without a license. Examples I thought of, can you sell a building without a C of O? Yes, you can. You're just gonna get less money for it. And then when you get it, you have to comply to get your C of O. Can you sell a bar without a liquor license? Yes, you can. You've just gotta sell it for less. The license gives a premium to it. The same thing with vehicles. Can you sell an unregistered vehicle? Of course you can. But you can't put it on the road until you register it. It's that second step that we don't have any part in here. He's either got a license or he doesn't. The consequences of complying to get a license or not are his issue. Yes, they're their issue. But they're his issue. And he will either comply, or he will meet the consequences of the statute. What, what you're getting into, though, is you're getting into trying to help him, and I understand why. You're trying to help him get a premium on the park, hopefully to get a responsible buyer that hopefully will fulfill the conditions that hopefully will qualify to get the license.
I have no interest in him getting a premium on the park.
That's all, but that's what, he's, he's looking at it, I would, and I'd be presumptuous here.
You're capitalizing as the board wants it.
It's easier to finance if you got a license. You get a better price if you have a license. Someone's more willing to buy it if they've got a license in hand. It's all for that group over there, for that issue of selling it. Selling it's not a condition of the statute. Selling it's not a condition of the license. Like, I mean, there are so many times where, I mean, you don't want a licensee coming in here and saying, hey, look, grant me my license because I'm selling it. And by the way, the next guy I sell it to, don't worry, he'll do a better job than I did. That I don't think is the measure of the board. And like I said, I completely understand where you folks are coming from. And I completely understand why. I mean, we tried it for years while I was up on the board. We, we had a lot less success than you folks have had here. A lot less success. You folks have moved that ball, I can't remember which one of you guys came on and started with this stuff, but you folks have moved the ball farther than any time I was on that board in terms of advancing these people's interests. Now it's brass tacks time. And I think we can't lose sight of the fact that the jurisdiction of the board currently is the license. Do they qualify? Do they not? If they qualify, give them the license. If they don't qualify, withhold the license. They'll react. He said, they'll have a reaction. Every action has an equal, an opposite reaction. Okay. But that's the issue before the board, even though I understand that there is an affinity to these people that have been like brothers and sisters in this room for I don't know how many years. It's like, you know, you recognize them all. You can smile at them and say hi. But they've also waited an awful long time. And the consequences of not having a license fall to the park owner, not to these people. And, you know, you get whatever measure of justice you do if the license isn't there. That's all I wanted to say, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn this over to board members, and then, then I promise to allow anyone else to speak. Any questions from board members?
I'll go first.
Mr. Spataro.
I completely reject the assertion about the planning board. Are we a town that doesn't want any development? No, we want development. Do we want quality development? We do. We've had the Bonfiglios with the nice development that they have up there. They finished theirs. John Scanlon finished his on Fairview Street. Have we had developers that have come and figured that they cut, you know, their losses, and instead of finishing the park, let us keep the bond and walk away? Yes, we have. So we're welcoming any high-quality developer that wants to do that. I couldn't care less about the people that live at Edgway respectfully submitted when it's on this issue about the license. Either they meet the qualifications and they get a license, or they don't. And if that means you folks don't have it, can't come up with the money, and somebody else does, then that's fine. Houses are foreclosed on in town, and people say, have an inspector come in and say, it doesn't pass inspection. And the realtor says, you want the house? It's sold as is. And the offer reflects the as-is condition. So, you know, just like last week that we talked about it. Gene got up here and said that it was not that the DEP was holding up Edgway from moving forward. It was Mr. Burke as the trustee that wasn't moving forward with it. That was satisfactory for me last week to deny the license. It's satisfactory for me this week to deny the license.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mrs. Colley. We still have this process in this under.
Yes, we do.
I think we've gone above and beyond trying to grant this license. I think we went over backwards trying to work with everybody associated with this park, trying to get this to where it's supposed to be. The idea that people are putting this sale not going through on this board is utterly ridiculous and more than a little offensive to me. I can't tell you how many hours I've spent down in Edgway on my own time trying to get this thing worked up. I can't tell you how many times I've called lawyers and engineers and said, I'll meet you down there. We can figure this out. So the idea that this board isn't working with anybody trying to get this done, again, utterly offensive, utterly ridiculous and offensive on the spoke. It certainly isn't this board's job to sell the park to these people. The owners walked away from this after they told us what they were gonna do and how they were gonna do it. They led us on. They gave us the slip. So the bottom line, as Mr. Spataro said, is this park is not qualified to get a license, period. It's April 1st. We were supposed to deny this license January 1st. I think today's the day we've denied it.
Thank you. Mr. McKinnon.
That's a terrific sales pitch you just throw out there, trying to get your license and send somebody up to insult the town. We had a lot of people that build in this town, work in this town, and they do, seem to do pretty well. So as a town father, I take umbrage with the fact that you're sitting here making an accu-ization, and you don't wanna back it up. And I'm talking to you, Mr. Salesman back there. You don't wanna back it up? Don't waste my time. You pissed me off with that one. If that, you think that's gonna work? It ain't. Mr. Burke, as far as I'm concerned, you've been negligent doing your job because you didn't go back and find the numbers and the money that was out there. You say that's not your job. Your job's to sell the park. You can sell the park. We, this board, for the past four years, has been working very hard. And we've been told by our community elders sitting Yeah, all the crap you put us through, I'm gonna slap your back whenever I can. We've been told that this isn't gonna go anywhere. We've been told time and time again that we were gonna get screwed by the, by the owner of the park. And they did. So we're sitting here with this on our hands. But we tried. If there's anybody that's got a problem with one of our departments, bring it up. I wanna know. Because I want our town to move forward. But don't come up and say you don't wanna date my sister and not give me a reason why. So I've really had enough of talking about Edgway. I think we've gone as far as we can go. And Mr. Burke, I don't care if you sit over there forever.
Thank you. Mr. Quell.
Well, all right. I think we should just bring the temperature down a little bit here. We don't need to be firing tank rounds back and forth at each other. It's not gonna get us any closer to where we need to be here. You know, I'm as guilty as anybody of letting my emotions maybe get the better of my judgment. I do it probably on a daily basis, and that's where I was coming from in trying to do, you know, what we've done here for the last couple of years. It was pretty cut and dry that there was one party that was completely in the wrong and another party that was completely the victims of what was going on. And so we were trying to do whatever we could to improve their quality of life as it relates to their, their homes. But, you know, I just think we need to, you know, as Attorney Vaughn pointed out, we need to get back to the sort of, you know, black-letter law here as far as it relates to a license. And he's right. I mean, you, you either are in compliance and you get granted a license, or you're not in compliance and you get denied. And I think at this point, you know, we need to get back to more responsible governing here. You know, as the saying goes, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. Why plan on taking the next exit? Because if we keep doing this, it's going to open up, I think, some, some problems for us. This park does not meet the standards necessary to, to have this license. And I think we have gone above and beyond to try to give opportunities here to parties out there to make an offer on the park. You know, it didn't work. We tried. And we've tried everything. And at this point, I think we just need to get back to responsible governing and ask ourselves, does a park meet the requirements? In my opinion, it doesn't. And therefore, we deny the license. I, I just don't see how we could be responsible tonight and do anything other than that. As far as the individuals that have made, you know, accusations about this not being maybe a business-friendly town, I, I think it's being a business-friendly town that got us here. You know, we offered a special permit to an individual so he could get up and running prior to having his park up to specs. And look where it got us. So, you know, I, I too was a little insulted by that, but I think, you know, McKinnon took care of that. So I, I, tonight, like I said, I, I plan on getting off this, this road and just getting back to sort of the brass tacks of what a license is meant to be and how it's supposed to be complied with. And I do not plan on voting in favor of granting a license.
Thank you. I, I said I was gonna recognize Bob one more time. Come on down.
One more thing. I'm not advocating for yous to do anything tonight, one way or another. The fact is that the banks that I'm dealing with anyway will not loan money on a park without a permit, which is your problem or their problem. But I just want yous to be aware. That's a natural fact. So, you know, some of you will need to have the cash off of it by the park. So how that ultimately affects it. Another thing that, when you guys are the rent control board, that will probably help, there's a lot of work back there. I believe to do a right here around the water lines, which is very expensive. You guys already know the whole septic system needs to be changed, and it's basically gonna turn into a mini sewer system. The plan that Gene gave me, we'll overlook it. It's gonna have a field and it's called advanced treatment, bio-care. It's not the full treatment plant necessarily, a whole park sort of combined. But you gotta run pipes like a sewage system through a mini town all the way over there. It's very expensive. One of the biggest unknowns for anybody looking at this, and whether it's me or somebody else's, as the rent control board, if we, any, to me anyway, and people could argue this, but the park's value, as in any business, is what is your income. Okay? So if everybody pays $300 and there's 100 people over there, and there's $30,000, and you work off your taxes and your park fees and your planning and whatever maintenance and septic repairs and management fees and debt service and stuff, there's a number... and septic repairs and management fees and debt service and stuff, there's a number that it's worth. There's a number you can afford to pay or the numbers don't work. The bank won't lend you money and all that stuff. So, there's a big question. And I'm not advocating for it to be a dollar. So, and I'm not trying to tell anybody, "You guys, this is your job." Whether you say, "We're not going to allow a rent increase in here no matter what these conditions are, they're going to be on whoever buys it," or "We're willing to go up whatever amount of money that you're willing to let the fee go up to." But that might help when you're trying to put the numbers together, be able to back up so people could, you know, that was going to be helping me. After the DEP, you guys, before was my next meeting, I come and talk to you about that. Because without knowing that, you know what I mean, something's only worth what it is. You know, and on this property, this type of property, it's the rents, like in a apartment complex. It's only worth what the rents are for. Well, here, it's only what the fees are for. So, adding in hundreds of thousands of dollars for water lines, and this is very scary. These are big, big numbers that you're talking about here. This isn't, "I'm going to buy a house and turn it in. The septic could be 15 grand, it could be 25 grand. I leave a little fudge factor because I do the work myself. I can make it work." You're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars for a septic system, hundreds of thousands of dollars to run a new water line. Again, somebody else might say, you know, "I'm willing to take the risk if the pipes leak in the ground or whatever, we'll pressure them if we can get Tom to sign off on it." But that isn't how I would do it. So, my offer was based on me doing those type of things. You know, there's a retaining wall in the back that has to get done. There's all the stuff from the road construction, top coating the road that was never done right, which is going to get tore to a mess. The whole back park will be running all those water lines and sewer lines for the whole park. So, when you're trying to balance those type of things and trying to even put a number on it, that's why Lakeville's easy. Lakeville needs water lines. I can roughly, I draw the plan, I talked to Billy Logan, we got some rough numbers together. I know I can ballpark exactly within comfort level what that's going to take. Some road repairs here and there, we can work on that. Lakeville, I mean, Middleborough Park, it is, there are just so many numbers and they're so big that any one of those things, any one of them could just like break it, you could get halfway through. I mean, I'm not going to invest, put my house on the line, invest every penny I've made in my life to go bankrupt, kind of fix somebody else's problem in the back of the park. So, you know what I mean, there's a lot of issues. Licenses, you know, the rest of the units being able to get released. But I mean, even talking to Gene, all the water got to get one way or another turned on before the septic system can go. So, you got to understand, and that brings me back to, because you were talking about the license. The license is a double-edged sword to me, how I was looking at it. Okay? I can't get financing without a license. Okay? But it'll be months. If my offer got accepted tonight, if we walked out of here and said, "We're done dealing with this, we'll take your last offering," it's months. It's, they got 45 days to accept or reject it. Then they have so much time to get financing, so much time to close. You know, if you give the license, park feels that they have an appeal because giving them a license puts value on it on something that they get the first option about. So, that could be an appeal that goes on for years. I don't want to deal with that. On the flip side, you know, if you do give the license, maybe by the fall, somebody can start working in there. You're not going to get all the water lines run from Lakeville all the way through Lakeville to get to the Middleborough to where the septic system has to go. That's not going to get done this year. Whether, I don't care who buys it, they can be the biggest development company in the world. So, now what's going to happen to me when I come in January 1st and I need a license? And you say, "Well, the water's not down, the septic's not down." Unless somebody's, maybe, I don't claim to be the smartest guy in the world. Maybe there's people out there who can figure out a way to get all that stuff squared away. But there are no approved water plants currently. That all has to go through Tom and they all have to get engineered and approved. There's no septic approved either way. I had conversations with DEP, they gave me the lawyer's name to talk into, and there's a lot of questions. There is a plan submitted currently for Middleborough, but they want to see how the sale of the park works. When I told them, "Well, if I bought Lakeville and the residents bought Middleborough," they said, "Absolutely, then. There's no joining at all there. We'll work with you, we can sit down next week and we can get you an approval." But if that doesn't happen, if somebody tries to buy it, I tried to buy it and make two corporations, they told me right out the other day, "They're not going to, they're going to treat it as one thing." Doing that is going to now add hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to a treatment plant for the back of the park and to the Lakeville people because now they're going to have to tie into it also. They're going to give them five years to do it, but they still have to tie it up. So, the judgment on how that is done opens up a lot of other candid ones. So, I mean, and you guys are way more frustrated. I mean, the side of my head's flat from banging on the wall for last month trying to figure this thing out. This is so complicated with two towns, with two boards, with two rent controls, with two associations that have the option to buy it, with all the work that needs to get in there, not to mention who even knows what's upcoming. Because there's not approved septic plants. You can't put a price on it. I can't send it out to bid. There's not an approved water plant yet, so there's nothing tangible. So, everybody's, you know, just trying to come up with what it's going to take, you know what I mean, to finish this. And you're not talking about $20,000, talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, to be fair to me and all the other people who walked away, you know, there is a lot involved. Now, why in so many years you haven't, more of that hasn't been resolved so you can go forward, I don't know. Why the people, you know, obviously they're very frustrated and maybe, you know, last week they were worried about me, somebody didn't know coming in and they don't want more stories. But, you know, again, unless it's somebody, wait, even Billy Logan said, and you guys probably all mostly know him and respect him, and he said, "There's no way the septic will get done this year. It's impossible." He couldn't bring Paul Redlon in and every other guy in town and get all the water lines in by the date that we start, if everything went smooth, to get it done for this year. So, issuing a permit, my bank also would want to know, if you gave it, are you going to still give it out in January? What's going to happen? And again, if you guys were to meet, and maybe, I don't know how you'd do it if it was a separate board that goes, but I mean, you know, whether you say, "We're not going to raise it another dollar for the next five years," or, "We'll let you work for $100, but we're not going to do it over there." Having that at least would help. And this is just my opinion, but that would help a lot, the bank and everybody else going in here, know, anybody looking at it, what the revenue's going to be so then they can try to justify the price and what needs to get done. So, that's just my two cents on it. So, and so it really, you know, I mean, I just, I'm a new guy, I'm the last guy involved in this, but I spent an awful lot of time working on it. I bet, I know most of what they know, not everything, most of what he knows, but not everything, most of what he knows, not everything, most of what the realtors know and the engineers. I mean, I get a pretty good picture of us going up, but it is a very, very complicated thing that, it's shocking that, and again, I don't know the history. Maybe this was tried years ago, that there's not, you know, him and his people and you guys, representatives from you guys and attorneys and people sitting down, I mean, they don't have to wait to buy the park until an offer gets made. They could buy it now, they could negotiate an offer and buy it now and work out terms with them. So, so if everyone's waiting for an offer so they can match it or reject it, why wait to that point? Why not sit down now and at least try to do something? I mean, it just seems to me it's in no one's interest the way it's going now. And I'm not telling you approve the park because I don't know if I'd rather have you approve it or decline it tonight. I just, to me, it's a double-edged sword. I don't know what's better or what's worse. But I just wanted to get you some more of the facts that were there. And I wasn't talking to you, Town, if I was one of the people you were talking about. I was talking about a very long list I had. I mean, you know, it's, you know, I've done a lot of work in town, my one garden leased in, you know, Holly Ridge down there, South Middleborough and South Woods, so, you know.
You had no problem?
I had no problem.
Okay. Well, then, you know, one of the people that apparently is a worry ward out there, so, and I can't really worry about worry wards, but I can be vocal again.
But, you know, to make excuses for anybody, and at this point though, on this project, because it's private property, it's never going to be an accepted town road, if you really wanted to help to get movement, whether it's for the residents or whatever, I mean, that could be some more conversations that happen and say, "The grates aren't from the manufacturer the town in Middleborough uses," because that's one of the things, like for example, they want all the grates changed and all the pits done. Well, that's because your DPW guys stock those. One grate, something happens, they go down the shed, they're growing on and all set. They're never going to do that in here because it's private property. So, even though it's a town regulation, does it have to get done on this because it's never going to be accepted? So, could you save, you know, again, these are all big numbers. That could be 40 grand a change every basin of the park. So, if some of that negotiation was happening and some of that talking was happening, you know what I mean, it would help anyway. And again, I don't know tonight when I walk out of here, what's going to happen. If I'll be back again, if my deal's totally dead or not, but it, just to try to help everybody move forward, if it's, you know, somehow it has to go forward. I mean, I don't know the answer, but somehow it's in everyone's interest to go forward. So, that's my two cents and I'm all done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You spoke for the residents. The residents want to, are your residents all set? You want to speak again?
Again.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Dan, for us. We appreciate it. We don't always say it, but we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, Ann.
Hi, Mom.
Well, of course, we're here about the license and that's all we're interested in. I mean, we've told you guys stuff for years about the people that had it and we don't want to give anybody else another chance. We've been through this. This has been hell for us. It's taken 20 years of our life, Steve. I mean, there are just so many things. They shouldn't have a license. There are trees falling on houses. We have a management company that don't listen or listen and don't do anything. There are other things going on in there. And to give them a license would be so ridiculous. How can you give someone a license with all of those violations? I know it makes it easier to go forward for someone to buy the park. I mean, I don't know what else to say. I think we've said it all. We've brought everything to your attention. We've asked for help. We've talked to the management company. We tried talking to Attorney Burke. You know, you didn't make the mess, but you're going to have to fix it either.
That's not true, ma'am.
Well, okay, that's a difference of opinion. I live there, I've been dead. I see what those are. We fixed a few pieces of equipment, but did you know about the gas leaks? Did you know about the Attorney General?
Did not.
Anyways, you know.
But you made a statement in there that you don't want to deal with anybody else. So, you said in your little update here, you said you don't want to deal with anybody else, that you've had enough dealing with park owners and people.
Well, you know, but the gas administration.
So, if you don't want to, just let me, if you don't want to deal with anybody else, the only alternative I see to that is if you buy the park and you deal with yourselves.
Right.
And is that, is that your intention?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that's seen out for you.
No offense, it's not a fair question, but it's not out of the realm.
Okay.
It's not out of the realm. It's always a possibility.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right. So, I guess we started here and then ask somebody else.
Okay. I think you are, and I'm just going to make a brief statement here and then I'll ask what board wants to do. As you know, I've been the biggest proponent for kind of keeping this thing going because I truly believe the only way this is going to get fixed is under new ownership and that new owner's got to have the wherewithal to get all this done. We heard from Bob this evening, who seems very knowledgeable, and even if they had a deal, whatever board members are sitting here are going to be dealing with this for a long time to come. Even if they start it tomorrow, you're talking not months, but years to get this done. But it'll begin. But having said all that, I think we've given Attorney Burke a long time to strike a deal here. And I'm very disappointed that you couldn't make this deal go well. I thought, you know, he seems like a very qualified buyer, one who understood the project, but clearly it seems to me that that fell apart. For whatever reason, it fell apart. It's too bad, but that was the last potential buyer you had. There's nobody out there, at least currently, who's interested in talking to you about the park except maybe the tenants. So, I don't know what extending this any longer is going to do. So...
I actually, that's not...
Just let me finish. So, given that set of circumstances, I can no longer support continuing this either. I just can't. I don't see, I don't see an end to this. I've done this for now four months, almost four months. I don't see any significant progress being made. Although I haven't changed my opinion, this is never going to be fixed. Your lives won't improve there until we get new owners who are willing to do this. We also heard that it's going to be very difficult for a new owner to get financing without a license. We have real-life experience who said, "Can't get one. Bank isn't going to back it." So, I don't know how you're going to, I don't know how anybody's going to get financing to get this done, but...
Mr. Rillo, Lincoln Andrews, I was on the planning board table 15 years ago and I don't think I heard one piece of information that I didn't hear back then.
Thank you.
I could have been.
Okay. With that, what's the pleasure of the board?
Want to close the hearing?
Do you want to?
Do you want to have to close the hearing?
Close the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, just before you close the hearing.
Stopped again.
But we were told about how we, you know, were aggressive. I mean, one of the other people that was very aggressive was our town manager. He bent over backwards. He accelerated the legal process when we didn't think that we could. So, I think a lot of the credit of moving us forward goes to him. Again, I do want to say, I think that as the board, we can't worry about who a potential buyer is, we can't worry about if there's a buyer. The only thing that we can look at, as this board's sitting as we do, is does the park meet the qualifications or doesn't?
I agree with that. Charlie, you want to make one more comment before the board makes a motion?
Hmm?
You want to make any comment on this?
What's the hope?
Okay, and I don't blame you. So, what's the pleasure of the board?
Close the hearing, please. You have to close the hearing.
Hearing is now closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to deny the permit.
Second. On the basis of...
Septic system.
Noncompliance.
So, the motion and a second to deny...
Wait, is that, are we making it just on the one thing or we're just...
That's fine.
The only thing we can deny on is this. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to deny based on an inadequate septic system or failed septic system. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it, it's unanimous, the license is denied for 2013.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We didn't come up to ourselves, you just tried to tell us.
Truth with facts, it works. We're going to give the room a few minutes to clear and then we'll continue.
If there's some, look, if there's somebody that's a low fly, if there's somebody that makes it so much of an encumbrance, I want to know.
Yeah. So, I can, I can tell you, you know, I...
That could be a good excuse to, that could be a good excuse to...
The boy she loved her for a few years.
I did. She loved you.
We've got other business this evening, so please take your conversations outside by the front door. Thank you. All right. Hey, Steve, you going to join us?
Yes, sir.
All right. Come on down.
Tonight?
We only have the hall through midnight.
All right. The next item under hearings, meetings, and licenses is a review of the remaining annual town meeting warrant articles. Most of these deal with the capital planning committee, and we have members of that committee with us this evening. So as we go through these, I'll be asking them to come up and comment on the article. With that, the first one is Article Number Eight, New Police Cruises, Portable Radios, New Tasers Under Police Equipment. So, I don't know who from the cap, Steve, you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So you all have a copy of that, I don't know if you have the grid also, that, if you have that, that may help you, but you don't need it. So Article Eight is for a total of seventy-three thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars, and that includes three new police cruises at ninety-nine thousand dollars. Seven portable radios, this is a continuation of a program we started last year of funding seven new radios each year till we reach the twenty-one mark, and then we should be all set. So those are seven, we did seven last year, seven more this year. And fifteen tasers, I believe we did about fifteen last year. And that's, those seem to be working out well, so that'll be the last phase of the taser program. Within that article, fifty, I believe fifty thousand dollars is going to be donated by the Pierce trustees towards the cruises.
Towards, how much was that again?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty? Okay.
So that seventy-three one ninety-five reflects the deduction from the total cost, which would have been one twenty-three one ninety-five. So the seventy-three one ninety-five represents the fifty thousand dollar donation from the Pierce trustees, which we thank them for.
First, before we really get into this, I want to thank the capital planning committee for all the work they put in during this year. It's not an easy process. This process has worked great. Now, I think this is our third year of working in, or is this our second year? Three years. And it really provides a forward-looking view of the capital needs of this town. And the committee has done a wonderful job kind of sorting out the wants versus the needs, and want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Could I just mention the members, which?
Sure, go right ahead.
Well, as failed to do. Link Andrews, Charlie Costello, Neil Rosenthal, Diane Stewart, right here from the finance committee, Alan Farley, Sockman's representative, and Andy Botson, former town manager.
Thank you. Any members of the board have any questions regarding this article?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKinnon.
Mr. Morris.
Yes.
Thank you for all your work on this.
You're welcome.
You've done a great job. A lot of work, a lot of hard work. What kind of cruises are they buying? Are they buying the Taurus's?
Go ahead. We got the chief here, so.
You buying the type that the state police are buying now?
Yes. Not the explorers, the utilities.
Are they small?
Small, yeah, they're like on a Taurus chassis.
Okay.
You want to get two of them on one edge.
Good.
Steve, didn't you have a question on the radios?
I did, I asked about radios, making sure they were compatible with the future growth of the, when they change bands. They're going to do away with the band you're on now, switch it to a. Yeah. Well, I'm just wondering if these radios are going to be able to be upgraded without having to buy all new equipment? Yes, they will be able to be upgraded?
Okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to support Article Eight.
There are motions, second to support Article Eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? It's unanimous, we'll be supporting Article Eight. Article Nine is the request from the fire truck, from the fire department, new forestry vehicle and portable radios for the fire department.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. The forestry vehicle is forestry number two, it's a nineteen sixty-seven, and it's a converted military truck. And it makes, we're told, about a hundred calls a year, and it's tired, it's old, and we want to replace that at a cost of two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. But it's been around for a long time, and hopefully we'll get just as long out of this one. And the portable radios, again, same problem, these radios, they're having troubles, trouble programming the old ones, and we'd like to do this in two phases, again, twenty thousand this year and fifteen thousand next year to replace all the radios in the department. If your article has the words "a new command vehicle" in it, scratch that. That is something we pushed off until next year. So the article will just be a forestry vehicle and portable radios for the fire department. Total cost, two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars.
Motion to approve Article Nine, with that exclusion of no new takeout about a new command vehicle.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it, unanimous. Article Ten, this is from the DPW. It's a request for a new sweeper and dump truck. And that's for the DPW, I guess.
We've got a few things in here, yeah. This one has also the park department.
Are this combined with the park department, too?
Yeah, the water department. So I'll go through them one.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so we have a sweeper for the DPW. This is the sweeper we put off last year, which was a good move because we didn't have any snow and we didn't need the sand last year. But this year is a different story. So this is a nineteen ninety-nine sweeper, they're expensive, a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, but it gets a lot of use, and it's a big town. The next is the new dump truck for the DPW. This is a nineteen eighty-four truck, again, well-worn, and it's twenty-nine years old, and that costs a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, but it's been around for a long time. You can go down and look at any of these. We did do that, we made a visit to the DPW again this year. A new dump truck for the parks department. They had no requests last year. This truck, it replaces a nineteen eighty-nine, the frame is rotted, the exhaust, the brakes, it's leaking through the roof, has over a hundred-and-fifty thousand miles, it plows, so it does take a beating, and we're told this was a hand-me-down from the G and E, so this thing has had a couple of lives. The total cost on that, by the way, this, just to note, is forty-six thousand dollars, but the Weston Forest Fund is going to donate twenty-two thousand dollars. They had raised some money from selling off firewood, and they were looking for a use for it, and they voted to donate twenty-two thousand to help purchase this truck, and the park department agreed to help plow the forest, the parking lot down there. So mutual agreement here. So the town saves twenty-two thousand, and the forest, Weston Forest gets plowing out of it, and mowing, or whatever they need. So that's the parks, ADA compliant traffic signal here at the Four Corners, ten thousand dollars, that is the type that speaks when you cross, tells you when to cross, the countdown, ten, nine, eight, seven, yeah, so it gets you across if you're sight impaired. So apparently that's required nowadays, if you do put in a new intersection, I guess if it hits certain traffic, you know, hits certain traffic numbers. So we're going to put that in down there and make it easier for people who are sight impaired to cross. A six-wheel dump truck for the wastewater department, that is a nineteen seventy-seven truck, and that is expensive also, a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. But again, that's rotted and well-worn, it's been around since nineteen seventy-seven, so that needs to be replaced. That'll come out of the enterprise fund. And then the new hydrants. Seventy-five thousand dollars for new hydrants. They go, we're told about twenty-two hundred dollars a piece, it'll get us about thirty-four. We have eight hundred in town, and they're trying to get on a regular system of replacing those so that we don't end up having to replace two or three hundred at a time. So that should buy us about thirty-four hydrants. Okay? Questions?
Mr. Chairman. What's the total of this article, now?
Five-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Spataro.
Steve, on the ADA crossing, is that starting to become a requirement? Do you envision that this will be something that we have to add to other intersections in town, or is this something that's unique to the Four Corners?
I don't think so. It's not required, so right now, I don't believe they can mandate that you retrofit intersections, but I'm told new intersections may need it, depending on, you know, how busy the intersection is. But I couldn't speak to that, I don't know. But I know we don't have to do this, it's just the recommendation that we do it from the DPW.
Well, we've had requests from members of the public about that particular intersection.
That one in specific.
Yeah, and that's really the main one that we're responsible for. Everything else is on state roads, and the state is responsible for those signals. This one is uniquely ours. The, actually, there's an error in this number, I just caught it, it's five ninety-two, it's not five seventy.
Okay, thanks.
So I'll have to make that change as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we support Article Ten, but five-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it. Hey, before going further, I want to thank the Pierce trustees again, and the Western Park Commissioners for helping us out with these capital needs.
Mr. Chairman, why don't we send them a letter of thanks?
We thank the, we thank the Pierce trustees every.
Okay.
We do that at the town meeting, right?
Yeah.
Article Eleven.
Eleven, okay. Total, one-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, one, a hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. And this is for the expansion of the Council on Aging Parking Lot, that's one, we'll take these one at a time. But that is to expand it, I believe thirty, if I can find my notes, thirty-seven spaces, I believe. And they've had a problem, yeah, thirty-seven new spaces, a couple of new drives going into it. I have a copy sketch, if you want to take a look at it, if anybody, I don't know if you probably have seen this, right? If anybody wants to look at it. So that will increase their spacing up there, and they have some troubles during functions and lunches, et cetera. So that's the engineering and the actual development of that. What else is on this list? Okay, carpeting, also at the Council on Aging, that's twenty-two-year-old carpeting, so I guess it was put in when that building was built. And it's fraying, and it looks like the carpet right here, so it needs to be replaced. And also carpeting and the town hall annex, which I believe is the original carpeting when that was opened. And the cost of all of that is a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars. The parking lot itself is sixty-nine thousand dollars, the rugs in the COA, twelve thousand dollars, and the carpeting in the town hall and the annex is thirteen thousand three thirty-five.
You're going to do, Mr. J? Mr. McKinnon.
Are you going to do compressor in the library also?
Oh, is that, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's, thank you. The compressor, not working. Two compressors there, one is not working, and it's, they're having a hard time keeping the building cold in the summertime. And they had a real big problem last year, where we had those major heat waves, so it's just putting a much bigger strain on the remaining compressor.
Okay, so this article includes the compressor at the library as well?
Yeah, that price.
So includes replacing the carpet, the parking lot, and finishing the carpeting in the bank building?
Yep. And the compressor, thirty thousand dollars. It's twenty years old, that compressor, and it's just not running.
Did, did we have trouble with the carpet that we did replace in the bank building? Were there fumes or something going on?
Yeah, we had some points about fumes, we're going to have to, when we do it again, we're just going to have to be a little bit more sensitive about that.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, vote to support Article Eleven.
Second.
There are motions, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it, we'll be supporting Article Eleven.
Alan McMinister.
Article Twelve.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars, and it includes installing security cameras in some of the schools. We started this last year, as you'll remember, and we need more money to finish it. So we've done cameras, DVD players to record the, activated the doors, so they set off alarms, and cameras in in areas that we didn't even ask about, because we don't want to know, so we're leaving this in the school, we don't want us to know, then we tell you, et cetera. But, so in critical areas, they put the cameras, they put a, what's that, Charlie, the key? Yes. What is it again? Okay.
Where is it?
Cod swipe, yes.
Oh, the cod swipe entrance to all the doors?
So that was part of last year's program.
Will this complete the security cameras and the secured entrance to our schools now? With this money, are they all done?
Probably not.
So which schools? Mr. Chairman.
They can tell us, but.
Arbitrary?
We're getting closer to finishing, hopefully, but the state-of-the-art like computers is always changing. So anyway, that's what that includes. And renovating the bathrooms at the elementary complex, those, that's four bathrooms, twenty thousand dollars each, eighty thousand dollars. We took a look at those, like, believe they're the original bathrooms from seventy-one, and they've had a lot of bodies going through there over the years. So this is basically a complete gut. New stalls and toilets, new sinks, new floor, paint the whole nine yards.
So how much is this article, now?
A hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve Article Eleven, Article Twelve.
Second.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Ayes have it, it's unanimous. Article Thirteen, Building Improvements at Middleborough High School.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this includes security cameras at the high school, replace, that's twenty-five thousand dollars, replacing and upgrading the fire alarm system at the high school, upgrading some of the lighting, the lights at the high school. This, right now, we use what they call the T-12 bulb, and it's not going to be manufactured, well, they stopped after two thousand and twelve, so they now want to replace those with what are called T-8s. And they've requested eighty thousand, but we funded twenty thousand just to see how this goes, and see how far they can stretch that, and then we'll deal with the rest of it next year. And also replacing some of the ceiling tiles. The tiles they have up there now, we, by the way, we toured the high school, spent probably two or three hours up there one night, had a meeting there, and we went around and looked at all the stuff. The ceiling tiles, they can't get replacements for those either. Those are nineteen seventy-one ceiling tiles, not made anymore, and so they would like to do some suspended ceiling. Some of these tiles are falling apart, broken, they have no replacement parts. So we funded twenty thousand dollars, which should do a couple of the hallways, and maybe they can salvage some of the good pieces to use in hallways where they're missing some of the old tiles. So we'll see how that goes, and then we'll talk about it next year about extending that. So that total comes to a hundred-and-fifty thousand.
These ceiling tiles, they do not contain any hazardous material, right? This is just replacing ones that are just falling apart.
Dangerous.
Thin.
Yeah, they're not, they're not hazardous.
They're not hazardous material, okay?
No. That was a floor tile, which we did last year, those, that has asbestos in it, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Spataro.
Steve, on these, this article is vague, it doesn't spell out all the things that you talked about. Do you have a commitment from the school department to spend the money as, you as a capital planning, and they agreed to?
Well, we have commitments from all departments to spend the money as it's funded at town meeting, and we are following up that each year. So this year, we required from all departments a list of what they did with the money they got last year. Did you spend it? Have you committed it? What do you have left in the balance? And so we're going to be very thorough with that and make sure that people spend the money the way it was voted on.
But this is the, this is the first article that doesn't spell out all the things that are in there. So I just wanted to ask if you had that commitment from the school department to spend it, as you've got, folks have already agreed, and I believe you're saying yes.
Yeah, I believe the answer is yes.
Absolutely. Okay, great. I make a motion, we support Article Thirteen.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Farley, you have another question?
Kind of regarding all of these articles, just as a member of the committee, if any department thinks they're coming in here and we're just going to rub a stamp like any amount that they want, it's completely mistaken. Not only, first they get grilled on the money we gave them last year. And when I say grilled, I mean grilled. And then we go through what they want this year, and we basically say, no, fix it, and come back with a better, better idea. And then some departments have come back two or three times until we finally hammer it down to a good number, and then we go through with them again. And then we go through it with them again. And that's how we arrive at this point. This is thoroughly better. Each and every article on here has been thoroughly better, to the point where we're asking the head custodian at the high school about ceiling tiles, how he's going to do it, where he's going to get them and what's he's going to use for later. I mean, it's one of the more thorough processes I've been involved in in town and I couldn't be happier being a part of it. I think it's a wonderful committee and they really do great work.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. We have a motion before, so Article 13. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Eyes have it. It's unanimous. Article 14, school department information technology upgrade.
Yeah, and that's, I guess, sort of self-explanatory. $175,000. This is the third year we funded that and they're doing a great job up there bringing the school up to speed on the computers and the instructional material and the teachers, the use of their computers, the smart boards. They're working on getting the, they've made the school wireless, the high school, and they're working on the other schools now. They have hot zones in some of the other schools. So they're doing a great job. And, you know, the committee is basically committed to funding it at a rate that they can keep up with. We don't want to give them more money than they can handle. So this seems, they seem to be working well with this amount of money. They have a good staff and they seem comfortable with the amount we've been funding. You know, and it looks like technology, this type of technology is, you know, it's going to be a huge drain in the future. It's just even in your own privates, things are changing so fast that we're constantly, you know, seem just changing computers and servers and hardware, software, you know, every four, five, six years, that's where it's going to come down to. And it's going to be a big cost to the town, but there's no other way around it, at least right now. So this continues, replacing just what you see, printers, file service, classroom instructional material, projectors, infrastructure, switching equipment. It's a whole host of items. They've requested double that amount each year and we've been giving it, you know, having it from the 350 to 175 because, again, we feel that's a pretty good pace and we've looked at what they've done. In fact, we met with them just Tuesday. We'd go tomorrow and they went over what they did last year, how much money they still have left and what they want to do in the coming year. We feel very comfortable with the staff that's doing this and the amount of money we're giving them.
Great. Well, I remember when we did the IT assessment, that was one of the major weaknesses, that we hadn't upgraded the, I'll call it desktop, but the actual equipment that people are using. And the network needed upgrading too. How far along are we now in replacing all that old gear that, I'll call it desktop gear, that people have been using over the years? Has that pretty much been swapped out now? Do we have any idea?
I'll let Charlie answer, but I believe, you know, it was, some of that stuff was 12 years old.
It was, it was ancient.
It was the first start of this program, yeah.
It was ancient stuff. Are we, how far down the road are we getting?
They've done quite a bit of it, but what they're going to focus on primarily with this money is the network backbone because they do have terrible problems with, you know, delivery and just the speed of, you know, the network. So they're going to focus on switches and those types of things that support the, you know, now that they've upgraded the desktop, they've got so much demand there that they're not able to meet it. And they've got to, they've got to be able to do it, otherwise it gets very frustrated, frustrating for the users. So that's going to be their target over the coming years, getting the processing speed to the point where these new units within the classrooms can pay off.
Steve, do you have any questions?
Other than I'd like to make a motion, we support Article 14?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to support Article 14. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Eyes have it. It's unanimous. Article 16, design of the police station. Right, Chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the request for $600,000. It will get a, the majority of it would be for the architectural and engineering piece, which include the design development, construction document, bidding. It'll also pay for the project manager to watch out for our interests. $65,000 of that would be for that, obviously, the design development and construction documents and bidding, things of that nature. And other indirect costs such as reproduction of documents, archaeological survey, legal advertising.
Okay. Everybody understand that the $600,000, basically, they're going to come up with hard numbers now on the design and the cost and prepare the big documents as well, so that we're all prepared.
And prepare a set of plans.
Excuse me?
And we're going to have a set of plans.
And we're going to...
Have a set of, complete set of plans.
A set of plans. We're going to have the design and print done. Now, I know the finance, how did the finance committee finally come down on this one?
I don't think they've taken a vote yet, but...
You haven't?
Based on the discussion we had at their last meeting, it seemed like everybody was on board that the design number had come down. I think there was some misconceptions that were creared up about, what were we getting from the money? And, you know, I think when, you know, they pick up the article, I believe they'll be in support.
Okay. Women, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Frum?
Just to throw you to Charlie, is it $600,000? I thought that number actually came down.
It had been close to $700,000.
Oh, all right.
And it came down to $600,000. At the last meeting, the architect basically is going to put his own, some of his own money in there with the hope that if it does get funded, he'll be able to recruit it later on, basically.
But with no guarantee.
With no guarantee.
Mr. Chairman, motion to support Article 16?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to support Article 16. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Eyes have it. It's unanimous. So we done with, we're done with articles?
So now what we have to do is we have to vote the warrant and the...
Do you have a question?
I just have a comment. Diane Stewart, I'm on finance committee, had the pleasure of being on the capital planning committee for the last two years as the finance committee representative there. It's been a very eye-opening experience for me to see all of the capital requests come through. I think the department heads, all of them, have done a terrific job in paring down their requests to what they really need. Charlie has been instrumental in helping with that. The town is going to get what it really needs and is not anything in excess. Something that hasn't been brought up, but I think that will affect our capital plan going forward. So the town is hiring a facilities manager to oversee all of the buildings and all of our facilities of the town owns. I think he will be, he or she will be, you know, instrumental in making sure that any capital improvements we make are kept up with and so we don't have any issue with things falling apart, not knowing what type of projects we need to do, what type of things we need to order. I just want to let the town know that the department heads have been really great in their needs.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Quell.
Do we have a timeline on that facilities management position?
Well, it's in the budget. So assuming that town meeting approves the budget, it's in the school budget. I would imagine we start, you know, shortly thereafter. I don't know, seeing our resident school committee member in the back nodding his head. So I would assume hopefully sometime in the summer, we have somebody on board.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Andrews.
To back up what Diane Stewart was saying, Mr. Chairman, I'm on the committee as well. What's happening right now is really nuts, is that we have, Daniele Boker is a perfect example, you know. As everybody knows, she heads up the library. You couldn't have a more dedicated town employee than she is. And she's being asked to go down there and give us her recommendations on boilers and compressors. And, you know, she's there to run a library. And having the facilities manager come down and assess the situation, obviously would save the town a lot of money in the long run.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Spataro.
I make a motion that we vote to approve the special town meeting and the annual town meeting warrants.
Second. I have a motion and a second to accept the, approve the special town meeting and annual town meeting warrants. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Eyes have it. It's unanimous. We've already dealt with the town managers' report and correspondence. At this point, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining with all of our bargaining units.
I think that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think the town manager, in his typical humble style, left out something important today, was something that Mr. Quell brought up earlier, is that he got a commitment from the Secretary of Transportation to come down in May to discuss the Middleborough Rotary Circle. So that was a, that was a very positive, positive thing that he accomplished today.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning that.
He may end up being in Boston, I heard later on, so Representative Coulter's office, but they first is a date.
Now, the important thing is you got them to sit down and talk about the, our plan as opposed to the one they're trying to force on us. So I think that's a big step forward.
Actually, even better than that, he made the comment when I, you know, when we talked about the, you know, the fact that they did advance the design, we moved this off of neutral and it's starting to progress, but that, you know, the, their design doesn't do everything that our design would do and we'd like to talk to them about it. And he made some very positive comments about, you're going to have to live with these improvements, so, you know, we want to work with you. So it was even more than I would have expected.
Someone from the state said that?
My state?
In fact, he did. He did. It was refreshing. It was refreshing.
Well, nice job.
Chairman, you want to rephrase, you want to restate your motion?
Yes, I'm going to back up again and do it again. At this point, I'd entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining with regards to all of our bargaining units. We will not be returning to open session and discussing these matters in public would be detrimental to the town's position. This will require a roll call vote.
So will you?
There are a motion, we have a second.
Second.
There are a motion and a second. Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Quell?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. And Mr. Frum?
Yes.
Mr. Spataro? We are now in executive session. Thank you for attending this evening's meeting.